Look at the March minutes.
Could you flip your microphone over if you could?
Well, doesn't want to do that.
Is it not picking him up?
Come on.
Hello? Hello?
Try this one.
Yeah, this is live. Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the March minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from our March meeting as presented.
It's been moved. I second it. Properly second it. We approve the minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? Being known, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of the March minutes of the planning commission, all signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. None opposed. We have a public hearing tonight, and we have to wait two more minutes. So... Let's go look at the April calendar. See anything there that... Needs to be discussed? What's the economic development plan? Is that something that, like the confidence plan?
That is formerly, it's one of the board's standing committees. Used to be called Industrial Development Committee. And a year or two ago revised the name of it to Economic Development because not all economic development involves industry.
But it's not part of the joint ID?
No.
Okay. I see one here for buildings and grounds. How's the new facility behind us? Is it working out all right? Any glitches or...? I'm killing time here.
Yeah, there are still a few, you know, problems there are continuing to work out, but, you know, everyone's in. Health Department, DSS. Some heating issues still been addressed. We're doing final negotiations with the contractor on wrapping everything up. There's still a few issues, some warranty items they are working on, so... But all in all, it's there in and functioning.
Good. Is there any further discussion on the April and May calendars as presented in our packet?
No.
Okay, we'll move forward then. It is now seven oh five and a few seconds afterwards, and we'll look towards this public hearing for those that have never been to a public hearing. We open the public hearing, we receive comment from anyone here that's present pertaining to this public hearing. Then we will close the public hearing, and the commission will discuss it amongst ourselves, and we'll try to render a decision or something of that nature. Okay? So you will have an opportunity to talk when we do open. So if there's any, without any further delay, we'll open the public hearing for the variance request for the Walters family. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you, in the plat, you have a map showing the property. I brought up the screen showing the entire property. This is just outside of the town limits on 52, heading out of Worthville. Rose Hill Road is the road on the right of your screen. Stone Fork Road, 52, continuing along the bottom of your screen. In your packet, you have a close-up of this area, and you will see that the Walters are proposing to cut out approximately one acre track of land out of the property, and that's here. If I could see the mouse along the bottom of the screen right here. Proposing to cut out about an acre of their property. The road in front of it, as you can see, and it's my understanding, was the old Route 52 that came through there. The new 52 you can see on the corner of your map, just below it. This is a situation where there is a small piece of land owned between the two. It's not just a widened right of way. We've had situations where the right of way's just been widened going down 52 south of Fort Chittle High School. There's a couple of examples where an old road runs, and it's just a real wide right of way. Is it Galena Church, I believe, down there, Robert, in that area? In this situation, it is an old right of way that is there. It is no longer state maintained. But what the Walters are proposing to do is cut off this one acre tract. The concern or the problem with the subdivision ordinance is the frontage requirement is a hundred foot of frontage on a state maintained road, and this is not a state maintained road. It is the access to it, has been the access to it. So therefore, they are requesting a variance to the frontage requirement of the subdivision ordinance.
Who owns the old right of way?
From what I understand from Ms. Castle's research, it is still a V-dot right of way.
So V-dot?
It's just not maintained.
So V-dot has control of that parcel? Okay. Would someone, Mr. Walters or Ms. Walters, would you like to address the commission?
Yes, sir. We need this variance. The house needs repairs, and I'm not able to do them. So we probably need to sell it. And that is still state property there, the old right of way. This map was from the V-dot. It has a green line for the state property lines up here at the old, at the 52, and the same lines down for the old Bluefield Turnpike, is what it used to be called. My sister and I inherited the property. It was my dad's home place. It was purchased in 1919. My grandfather, his brother, bought it, and... We're just not able to take care of the house.
My question. I see a septic system to the southeast corner there.
It's on the east side, right.
Okay. Would there be a possibility of, and this is just a wild guess, taking a hundred feet off of Rose Hill Road up through there and compensing the septic system and add to that lot to make it more legal?
There's a problem there because there's a spring that we own, the spring there, and it's needed for watering the cattle. There's cattle on the property. That's the only available...
Water source.
Water source for cattle.
For the cattle.
It's on the southeast corner.
Right.
The lines that you're showing, proposed lines, does that follow an existing fence? It looks like there's a fence in the photograph.
Part of it does, but going up behind the house, I would have to come out. There's some distance there to meet the variance requirement, I mean, the right of way requirements, ten feet from that one building. There's no fence there. There's a fence there now, but it, the building sits in the fence, in the fence line.
They were trying to make certain they didn't have to... They asked for another variance request, so they moved the property lines in between those so that, you know, the building, they wanted to be with the property, would be with the property, and the others would remain with the residual. And so that's the only place that's really not following the fence line. Mr. Chairman, if I might, and, Mr. Walters, my understanding, you were also going to apply to get a septic permit for the lot where the house is.
Right, because there would be, I feel sure enough, room for any kind of septic system. It's a huge front yard.
The present septic system is closer to the spring, but you're going to actually put a new one in the front yard? Okay.
I have a question. Is there public water in that area?
Yes, sir. It goes up Rose Hill Road.
That's what I thought, so you could have access to public water if needed. Maybe something that would involve septic system, put the septic system in as a water supply. And I have another question. You have this land between the new, uh, 52 and the old 52. Who owns that?
It was George Johnston property.
So when they moved the road, they moved it over on his and left, split his place in, didn't he?
He purchased it at an auction back in the nineties, I believe. Ninety-six, I believe.
Yeah, go ahead. I was going to fix this.
It's north, or northwest. How far away from the house is that? It's... It's just past that one.
Water right would be guaranteed to the house through your sale then.
See that same hole right there in that rock ledge right there, that dark area between the right east of the house?
Yeah, about the spring.
Yeah, right there. Yeah. What is that?
That's an old tree. That's a blue tree.
Oh, a tree. A shadow. All right.
Mr. Chairman, when the plat was...
Met with Mr. Walters, the first question we had was about the Rose Hill Road, and then when he explained the spring box, and obviously you can see the cattle paths and everything coming down through there.
Yeah.
We always try to take that avenue first, but we understood that. That's why we went ahead and told him he would have to apply for variance if that's how they want to do the division of property.
What do you do, all right, V-dot owns that. I mean, since that is an old road. I mean, a road.
They collect money for every mile of road that is listed, whether it's being properly cared for or not. Do they ever drop in gravel on it at all? A lot of times they will do that to say that they've maintained it.
Not as that I can recall.
But V-dot gets paid for every mile that's within a county or whatever, however it works out.
They, and most times in these situations, they relocate them. They'll keep the right of ways because they can't, you know, landlot people or whatever. It's just, it's no longer in their maintained system. We have one of these at Real Retreat Lake. If you remember when Raymond Mattany, his son, was breaking off an acre on their property, and they were looking at doing a variance request, and it was the exact same thing. It was an old V-dot road. It runs through the middle of the lake. And they got to doing the research at V-dot and determined that they never did actually abandon that. So he did not have to go through the variance request at that time. They hadn't done anything on it since 1960 or 70, but it was still a state road in their system at that time.
So would this technically still be state road?
It's technically not a state maintained road. It is a right of way.
Because if that was, then it would...
Right.
It would eliminate...
It wouldn't even be here before.
Have variance.
This presence. All right. I did, Michelle and I talked a couple of times today about this to see if there was a precedence for us allowing something like this to happen, to make sure. We don't want to do this, and then a waterfall of people come in here and do the same thing circumvent the ordinance, which we have a copy, everyone has a copy of the ordinance in front of them. And just right off the top of her head, she did come up with two, correct, that were similar in nature to this. Would you enlighten us with those? Just tell us a little bit about those two instances, so we'd be abreast of that.
Well, you did, Michelle, Eric asks us, have we ever granted any variances on anything off of non-state maintained roads? Have we granted variances to frontage requirements? And I told her that unless I went back through all of them, I didn't really want to report on it tonight. And I did not go back through all of them. I don't know that she did, but I will say there have been situations. We did, some of them were large tracks off Mattany Flats Road. I think we split into two large tracks there. One on, you said, on Turley Farm Road, there was a division that was done there. We've not had any that have come before, so that I'm aware of, that have had an old state maintained road where the house was built on the old road and the road's been moved up. We don't have any situations like that. Corinza Cross, Euro Clifford may remember, out on Rolling Rock Road, out near Sharon's Drive in Real Retreat. It was a special needs child that had been injured in an accident. We cut off a one acre tract for them off of a 50-foot right of way. It wasn't even an old state maintained road. It was off of a 50-foot right of way. So, you know, each one of them have been looked at in respect to the situation that has presented itself or why they were not on, you know, why they did not have the state maintained road.
Right.
I know we had some issues with the old tram road. I don't know whether we did anything on that, but I know we had some issues with it. I don't think that ever come before us to make a decision.
Yeah, the problem is there, there is not any right of way that met the requirements.
Okay. Are there any further questions for Mr. Walters? We'll let you sit down. We'll close the public hearing at this time.
Aye.
And try to figure out what we can do. This, I don't know, it's kind of unique, but V-dot still owning that property.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out one thing. It's a little different in this case. The old road bed was used for many, many years as a road for traveling public. It's not like a gravel road that they pushed through the mountain, you know, 50-foot right of way. I mean, it's got a good road bed. I mean, I don't see any problems with it holding up.
Well, and being that close to town water and sewer, I would love to see you just hook onto that when you do the rest. That would be just a personal thing.
I don't know long what Randy's saying. The house was built, looks like it's facing this road, and the road, the state cell owns the road. It's one clause in our specifications that says that it has to be state maintained, but I wouldn't have any problem with variance in this situation.
Okay. Let's entertain a motion then, one way or another.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the variance as requested. But I do have several issues with the septic, number one, and the well site. I want an easement to those. I know they're looking at getting a new septic permit for the one acre site, but I would like for the existing septic and well system to have an easement to it.
If they get the approval for the new septic site on site, do you still want to require the easement to the old septic system?
If they are using it now or plan to continue using it in the future?
Okay. It's been moved, and...
I'll second with the amendment, as it...
Okay.
They have the right of way to the well and septic.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the variance with the right of ways to the septic and the well being present. Is there any further discussion?
I hate to go against, but I'm really, I really disagree with saying that the well has to be included because that can, if you build, if you buy the house, you always have the opportunity to drill your own well or water. I can see problems arising if two people decided one was using more water than they should be or who owned the pump and things on two properties.
Okay. Well, I would, I tell you, I would like to see it, if you don't use the well site, that you at least have an easement down to the water on Rose Hill Road. That was my question, was how you going to get water up there? If you, you know, you was talking about using the water that...
You know, I just figured if I was buying a house, I'd probably be drilling the well myself, but...
Okay. We've got...
You have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, so we have to vote on approval with the right, withdrawing in a right of way to the well and the septic.
If they want to make a substitute motion, they can do that and you can vote on it first.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask a question of the owners?
Yeah. I mean, he's here. Go ahead, Randy.
Do you intend to let the new owners use the well, or are you going to cut it off and let them be on their own?
We could work, we could work something out either way. They could use well for a period of time, and then they can do that.
Would you be against putting an easement down along the old Route 52 right of way to allow them to access the state, I mean, the town water and sewer? All right.
I'm not comfortable with that.
All right. So... Do we want to amend the motion to say that there would be a right of way to the well and the septic, an easement to Rose Hill Road for well, for water and septic?
I think he would be agreeable to put in his sales agreement how the water and the sewer system would be used probably to cover, cover our concerns with Randy.
I think so. I have one more question for, I guess, the staff. Rose Hill Road is in the town limits.
Yes.
Would they be able to hook on the town water, being in the county?
Should be able to. The situations like that in the past, if they own it as requested, you are connected, yeah.
We're not connected, but ABF Truck Terminal is connected to town water, and they're outside of the town. There's several entrances of that. When you're right on the line, you can pull in. All right, so Randy, would you add the language easement to Rose Hill Road for water and septic to your motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Is that what you were going for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Clipper, would you agree with that? All right. We've got, the motion as it stands is to allow the variance with a right of way to the well and the present septic, and also allow an easement to Rose Hill Road for water and septic.
Mr. Chairman, I think the language should be an easement to the well and the original septic, not a right of way as well. So it's an easement for all four items, yes.
All four items, okay. It would be easement for the present well and septic, and an easement to Rose Hill for water and septic. Any further discussion?
Is it a permanent easement?
Yes.
There we go. It's all an easy?
All those in favor of the motion, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, with one against. There.
Mr. Chairman, I will also mention it was not relevant to the variance request, but the property is within a agricultural and forestal district, and the Walters are pursuing options on that, which one of the options is the death of a family. They can, the heirs can request withdrawal from the district, so...
Right.
We will be following through with that, which would have to be, take place before any final plat is approved.
Right, and that usually comes before us for a vote prior to the...
It does in certain situations.
But with the death of the family?
With the death of a family member. Just reviewing the code section, it appears that it does not have to require that.
Okay. Familiar with that often?
Not as far as the variance. I just disagreed with the well part, so...
Okay. All right. All in, all done. Thank you. Sorry, it took 20 minutes, but anyway, that's the way it works. All right. Moving forward. Page three. Subdivision plat report. Okay. Let's look at the staff report, item number one. The minor adjoining owner line, line revision by Alderman slash Terry, page four. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, this is somewhat confusing. Ms. Castle put together a nice report, but it's still difficult to understand, and I'll try to show it to you as best I can. On the plat on page 4A that you see, you will see a, to the north, a George Alderman tract, 1.826 acres. It's got sort of a diagonal track line going across it. At lots not involved at all. That's just their tract that adjoins it. Just below that is a, is a tract, I'll call it sort of a triangle tract, that ran across there that they owned. And then to the left, you see a 1.412 acres after exchange that says George Alderman and Christine Alderman, right there, adjoining Route 100, just north of the seal, of the surveyor. In between those two tracts, there was a pie-shaped tract, and I've got it pulled up on map, and it's not exactly correct on there, so I don't want you to dwell too much on it. But you see how that circles around and makes that pie shape there? It appears there was an old road that ran through there years ago and came back around. And I'm not even certain that the owners really even knew that that pie-shaped piece ran in between his tracts. So in all that mess in the middle is a little pie-shaped tract of land that Mr. Alderman is gaining from Mr. Martin, who owns the property to his south. And then on the south side of that 1.412 acre tract that I was mentioning, you will see a dash line right in there, a little pie shape. It's labeled number A. That little pie piece, Mr. Alderman is giving back to Mr. Martin. And in the process of all this, in vacating all these lot lines, the tract that you see to the north adjoining Route 100... And in, in the process of all this, and, and vacating all these lot lines, the track that you see to the north adjoining Route one hundred to be conveyed to Kayla Spencer. And rejoining their lot lines, that's a lot he's going to convey to, to Kayla Spencer. But basically it ends up with that lot and then the, the sort of weird, I don't know what you want to call it, arrow shaped lot with the frontage on Route one hundred. And then Mr. Martin is gaining that sliver that's going with the rest of his eight acre track. So it's a little bit confusing, but basically it's just all adjoining landowner, it actually makes the tracks a lot easier to follow and, and straighten some of that out.
And it's clear as mud, meanwhile, yeah.
It's exactly clear as mud.
I'm sorry, it's...
Even the surveyor got confused because we had to sit down and draw it out on paper and go through, they had their chart, they had everything labeled correctly except their table in the middle. They had it labeled backwards as to which parcel was going to who, and we had to do the math, and Ms. Castle was correct. And talked to the surveyor, and he's like, yeah, I've got them backwards, so... But it, it really actually, even though it doesn't look clear here, it actually made it a much better looking parcel than what it was to start off with.
Okay. I'll go along with it. Well, Randy? Is everybody, is everybody all right with that?
Yeah, I'm always for clearing stuff out.
All right, I guess we'll move forward to the Lab Properties LLC, Francisco and Catina, Katrina?
Mr. Chairman, I'm convinced as L A Beach Properties, we see a new plat on it every two or three months, but...
Yes.
Has any of them been recorded?
Yes, yeah.
I guess it's part of the requirement, so, yeah.
Basically what they are proposing to do here, and I like the five B map the best. Basically, they are doing away with what was lot number three. You'll see a, two circled threes in there. The northern half, that part of lot number three is being combined with lot number one to make a total of thirty-one point eight six acres. The bottom, the southern half, number three, that you see circled has been combined with lot number six down below it to make it a total of forty-nine point four six one acres. And then you see number, see lot number two, which fronts on Route fifty-two. Just south of it, you will see a square lot, and to the right, you will see another circle number three. That was the frontage for that lot number three, that part is being conveyed to lot number two. So basically lot three has been split up and conveyed to three different lots, part to lot one, part to lot two, to make that one larger track on fifty-two. And then the balance going with lot number six to the south. Basically, all they did was took four lots to three lots.
Jeez. Is this, how close is that to that? Camper thing, I mean, the, no?
You remember the, I don't know if you've seen the new Fort Chisel EMS building, you know where the new...
Where are we?
Church? Okay, before you get to the High Meadows subdivision that we did a bit of, it's a long straightaway, it's all that property on the right.
Straight across the road from Ever So Well, Dr. Williams.
Okay, 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 okay. Now I know where you're talking about.
What's the name of the church, Robert?
It's Jehovah, not, the Mormons, it's a Mormon church.
Mormon Tabitha, Mormon, whatever.
And you're getting ready to have a one, one point five million, one and a half million dollar Church of God there shortly.
Really?
Yes, sir.
And it's right here on the bottom, that Fort Chisel Church of God?
They're getting ready to move there, there's the one that's across the road from the Family Dollar, the metal building that sets up on the bank there.
Yeah?
They're getting ready to move from that and to build a one and a half million dollar church down there. Plenty of churches and plenty of banks in Fort Chisel.
Good.
Boy, I sure would like to say something.
I know you would. Just remember we're on camera, so.
So anyway, Chairman, that's, that's all there is on that one.
Okay, is everyone okay with that? It is another confusing, but it clears up something. Okay. For what, for what it's worth, okay, moving on to the Blacklick Farms LLC.
This one here, Mr. Sagar is obtaining five acres behind him. He owns track A, he is obtaining track B from Blacklick Farms LLC, vacating the property line in between, and he will own a five point five five oh acre track.
I'm glad they're combining it all together as one lot.
Yeah. We always encourage that, I, I don't like to have them, what in the future could end up being orphan lots as much as possible. We didn't put the map in here, but Ms. Castle has the map of the residual for Blacklick Farms. That's one of the things we require with the ordinance is the sketch to show what's left. She has that in her file.
This is back up before you get to, into Ivanhoe.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
You know where they put all the lots along ninety-four and in the last one?
Yeah.
That last house is the one, it's the Ronald Lawson House.
Okay, how far from the creek? How back, far back up?
About a half mile.
Half mile, okay. All right. I have an idea where it is. All right. Thank you, staff, for, it's like you've cleaned up at least three major things, and hopefully we didn't create anything bad on the Walters' property. All right, we'll open it for citizens' time, of course, all of our citizens have left. We've looked at new business under April, March calendars. Does staff have anything that they need to, that needs to come before the commission?
I'm not sure if we discussed it last time, you're, I think you're aware, Ms. Castle kept you aware, the board is looking at doing the wind ordinance. She sent you some emails today about a tour, still trying to schedule a tour for in the future on that. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know of anything else.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
At our last meeting, I don't think we went on record thanking the board supervisors for acting on our request to look at the wind ordinance.
Pass that into the members. Okay. Dr. House, your front said? Enlighten us.
We're still in the process of looking at the budget. Heard all the budget requests, and we're meeting tomorrow afternoon beginning at five to try to start to, you know, confirm everything and make any more changes that we feel like we need to. One, one of the things that you all had asked about, and then, you know, Michelle in her presentation, you know, we talked about it. We are looking at doing a more extensive, comprehensive plan, not just kind of touching it up, but sort of redoing it. Because there have been several changes since, when was it, ninety-six, is that right? Ninety-seven?
When we did the major...
Right, and so with the changes that we've had in the county, you know, with all the additional water lines and, and, and things like that. Yeah, we want to do a much more comprehensive, comprehensive plan, if you will. So, you know, if you keep that in mind, that is one thing that, you know, we'll be doing. I don't know of any, anything else.
What, I guess my question is, is I know that it's coming up, where's the money coming from for the eight million dollar school expansion program? There's got to be some divvying up as to where it's, how it's going, I mean, what's, what's the gut feeling of the board at this time to take it from what sources?
One of the things that we've done, you know, and, and, and I have to compliment Mr. Dalton on this. He, he looked at all of our debt service, all of our loans. We were able to use some reserve funds to pay off some of the smaller ones, combine some of the others. And so by doing that, we're saving considerable amount of money. Matter of fact, I guess close to what the debt service would be on the, on this phase one. So right now, I mean, as far as tax increase, I'm, I'm not sure that anybody's looking at, you know, at a, at a tax increase right now. We, you know, we thought that we might, you know, that that might be necessary, and it still may, you know, that's another thing that we're going to be talking about in the budget. But right now, you know, with, with moving some money around and paying some loans off and, and the savings, you know, it's looking like we may be able to, you know, to do it without any, any additional burden. Stephen, do you have anything to add to that?
No, no, that, I mean, that's, the one thing you look at, eight million is one thing, but also when you look at it as debt service, and it's four to five hundred thousand dollars a year in debt service. So, you know, by paying off a couple loans at the industrial park and things like that, out of industrial reserves from, from successes that they've had there. It frees up, frees up money to be applied towards that, so...
We also did the same thing with the, with the water and wastewater, which doesn't go into general fund, which doesn't affect, you know, school construction. But it will, you know, possibly delay any type of water increase that we might be looking at for a while.
Any bids on the old health department?
Three bids were received, I think Buildings and Grounds receives the bid tabulations tomorrow.
And Progress Park, we're about, I mean, are they, they haven't been able to do much out there to finish the lot?
I have not heard that they finished it yet, of course, it's not been very conducive weather recently, but the plans were still to finish it this spring on the Lot twenty-four project.
Okay, any other questions from members? Thank you, appreciate your information. Thank you, staff. Anything else that needs to come before the meeting? I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move we adjourn?
It's been properly moved and...
I'll second.
And seconded that we adjourn this meeting as a Withy County Pla, Plan Commission. All those in favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.